Councilmember Debbie Burtland.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jane Baum.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Searle.
Here.
Councilmember Thomason.
Here.
Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Gross.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here, and thank you. And I think really before we do anything else, we need the audience members to come join us up here because it's not crowded and there is...
We have lots of food. Lots of food. We have tons of food.
We're all packed in here for the public's viewing audiences information. It's been a sort of an evolution to get to the point where we're doing it this way. I think in past meetings, we've had the fortune of having some folks absent so we've never had quite such a large crowd up here. But we're squeezed in, we'll make it work, and we're happy to be meeting jointly like this. So it's welcome to everybody who's here and welcome to our audience members as well. Jane, you want to go ahead and launch on our first?
Sure. We have, I believe, looking at the agenda here, three topics that we're going to cover together. The first is the Mary Wait Pool discussing our interlocal agreement, the proposed agreement from 2015 to 2024. And we're going to hear both from our city manager and our superintendent about the interlocal agreement.
Off you go.
Off you go.
All right. So thank you, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the board. Pleased that this is the first time, I think, in many joint sessions that we've had all 12 of you present, so it's nice to see you all. Not particularly in this view, however, but no, it's of course very nice to be here. So the first topic is a construction projects update and schedule, so I won't go through the specifics in the briefing paper other than to add what's new and different.
We're going to do the pool first.
Oh, we're going to do the pool first.
Well, actually, we can do it either way. I have an agenda that has the pool first and then this that has the construction.
I'm sorry, so...
I'm sorry. We'll never...
I'm on autopilot, so...
Would you like to start with the research?
With construction, okay. I'm looking at our study session and construction projects, I'm thinking that's the...
Doing agendas.
Doing agendas. So I won't go back and restate everything that's in your briefing paper. I trust that all 12 of you read that, but there is some new information that I would share with you. At the time of the writing, the district was unaware of the specific plans for Country Village Day School. And since the writing of the briefing paper, the ad hoc committee has met of the board and city council. And I have been in touch with Ms. Tepper, Linda Tepper, who's the executive director of Country Village. And they have formally requested a 60-day extension to their lease, which presently expires on August 31st, as do all of the leases of our tenants. They're all in the same cycle now, and they would normally then expire then or be renewed on September 1st. So the board took action in February to have the leases end in August for a number of reasons, largely around the notion of due diligence to ensure that we allow enough time for site preparation, for demolition of the old buildings. And I think included here is the notion, or perhaps it isn't included, the district in its soils testing did discover that there is an oil tank that contains oil on the campus, and it was not associated with the school. So in the use prior to that lot being used to build a junior high school, there potentially was another use, whether it was gas station or another home or business, but there is an oil tank that has to be decommissioned and excavated and all of the soil contamination removed. So those are the kinds of things that we don't know what we're going to get into until we actually begin the process of demolishing a building over 60 years old, and that contained some asbestos materials that were consistent with the building material of the day. And that kind of abatement and containment will likely take time. Nonetheless, Country Village has asked for an extension, and I believe that the district and the ad hoc committee with city council and Noel and myself will meet with our contractor to work with Country Village to see what in the timeline might be feasible to potentially escalate so that we could not need as many of the 60 days or to help Country Village with whatever we can do to expedite their new lease, their occupancy into their new building. I know that one of our tenants, the child school, we were able to work with the city of Renton and their planning department to call earlier a conditional use permit hearing. And they were appreciative of the work that we were able to do. We, as in a colleague of mine in the Renton School District, as well as others, potentially the mayor, who were on the sidelines trying to open as many doors for child as possible. And with respect to Little Acorn, we are taking the city's rentals, who would normally be in the spaces that Little Acorn will occupy, in order to have the city potentially make the modifications that it needs in order for them to be ready on September 1st. So we're taking those rentals over the summer. So we're working together, and we are working with our tenants to try to help them as they seek a new home because we value the services that they have.
Yeah, just to give you a little more information on Little Acorn, the city's, it looks like we're going to be able to accommodate Little Acorn in the annex building behind the community center. And so we're going out to bid next week to make the modifications necessary to part of that space to make that happen. And at least as of right now, it's a very tight schedule, but we're very hopeful that we can have that space ready to go by the end of August is where we are right now. So that's looking good.
If there are no questions, I'd be happy to answer a question. I want to go to talk a little bit about construction schedule and the cooperation that we've received with the members of the city's planning team and traffic team. But I thought if there was a question about the tenants and the demolition of the north campus, this would be a good time to ask. Carry on. All right. So I want to compliment my partner Noel Treat for the work that he and his team have done to assist the district in our application. And prior to us becoming an applicant, we viewed our city partners as consultants to help us think through the myriad of issues around traffic and around potential mitigation that would result from these new buildings. And we've had a great relationship, great cooperation. And presently, we are in the pipeline for, we're an applicant, to have our properties rezoned, as you're probably aware. The planning commission has met a number of times as recently as last evening. We are planning to still be on track. Hopefully, you will receive, city council, a recommendation from the planning commission to rezone at least two or more of our properties. We hope to go to bid on the high school expansion this summer. And that will mean that we'll optimize bids and costs as best as we can, and we hope to then open that school during the 15, 16 year. So it could open mid-year, which would be perfectly fine. Construction will occur when students are in session, but it might open in the second semester of that 15 school year, which will enable us to occupy these 10 new learning spaces. With respect to the middle school and the elementary school, we hope to go to bid in December. And there is a lot of work out in Puget Sound today. And given other school districts' bonds that were successful and we're happy for them, there's a lot of work on the street. And we want to get in as early as we can to be able to, A, get the A-team that we can hire, and B, to get the best price for these schools as we can. And part of our interest with the north campus, I'll refer to that as where elementary number four will go, we want the bidders to see a demolished site. We want them to see what the footprint of the existing school was because we're not, they're not anticipating showing up part of that hillside where that junior high school resided for 60-some years. So we want them to see that this is the site, it's open and available potentially as early as December. So that's part of our interest in getting the buildings abated and demolished in the timeliest of times. And then Islander Middle School, we have an expansion and a rebuild. And we're working with the Lakes community. The Lakes, we've had a meeting with them. The district brought its design team to a meeting. We participated in commission meetings, planning commission meetings, and we are going back to the Lakes community to, we've listened to some of their concerns about where buses were going to be entering the site. We listened to concerns about mass and scope of building. And so today, the board heard from the architects a modification to the gymnasium that would face that, I believe, western property line. So in this due diligence, this listening to neighbors, this process of asking for a rezone, these are all technical problems that are in a very political environment, and we're trying to navigate as best as we can and be good neighbors to our wonderful neighbors who have been very supportive of our schools. And we also want to build the schools that the community by nearly 75% vote said, yes, we want you to build these schools. So we're balancing all of those things. Members of the board, feel free to weigh in and augment.
I just think one thing that has perhaps made it a little more complicated for interested community members is we have a plan to rebuild a portion of IMS. But in coming up with that plan, we actually needed to look into the future and think about what will IMS as a whole look like down the road. So some of the things people are considering right now, for example, bus traffic, won't come into play during this early, this recent project, this upcoming project. But we want to make sure that we're making recommendations that will be probably for future board members, unless one of us or more of us are still here, that reflect sort of good decisions made now while people are interested. Any other comments?
Going back to the North Mercer Campus, I would say that there's been a lot of concern on the board about cost overrun and the problem that Gary gave about the oil tank is one of those unforeseen obstacles that we have built into our schedule contingency for accommodating such unforeseen obstacles. And so the board is very concerned about staying on schedule and keeping costs down and delivering a fourth elementary school on time to the community that voted in support of this much-needed elementary school. So it's a great concern getting all the tenants appropriately situated in a manner that allows us to proceed optimally for the building of our fourth elementary school. And we don't really have very much control over where they go or how those accommodations are set up.
Okay. If nothing else, Pat, do you want to...
Well, Gary, did you mention youth theater? I don't know if in your summary to...
I didn't touch upon youth theater, but we are...
Your other tenant, I just thought you might like to...
Yes, yes, thank you. I slipped my mind. I'm not using any notes, I'm looking at the screen here. And youth theater is going to be taking advantage of an option that the district provided, which was if you leave before August 31st, then we will benefit you by giving you a free month's rent for every month you leave early. And so youth theater liked that idea, and so we are going to be renting space to them at Islander Middle School. And so their summer theater and summer program will be at Islander. So that theater will be vacant. In fact, we think presently that the art vendor that we're taking from the city may be housed where youth theater presently exists. So youth theater, and then of course, thank you to the council for the work that you've done with them to help them find a permanent home with the land that presently where the old recycle center sits. So I think we've been working with our tenants to find, to help them land on their feet. Okay?
Okay.
I think we have different agenda versions here, so what's next?
So is that, there's nothing else in terms of construction summaries? Nope, all right. Well, we can move on to the Mary Wait there.
Councilmember Baum, did you have a question?
Just a quick question. I noticed the district has requested land use variance for the classrooms on Thursday 92nd. Was that anticipated or is that a...
Was it anticipated? We decided that it was not likely that we would receive a P-zone, a request to rezone in a timely enough timeframe in order to get a resolution on that and move forward. That was a far more complicated process, so instead, we decided to ask for a variance to the present residential code in the high school. And so the variance is the number of feet that the major structure has to be from the road. And so in the city's rules, you have a hearing examiner who you refer variances to, and that hearing is slated for next month.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we're hopeful on that front as well. Okay, anyone else? Right, on to the pool. So do you want to take, do you want to take this one?
Certainly. Why don't I get this started off? As you all are aware, we've had a relationship with the district for a few years now to fund continued operation in the Mary Wait Pool. Last year, we contributed 120, or for this year, we're contributing $125,000 in the past. That's been 100 and it's grown over time. What was discussed, I think at the last joint meeting of these two bodies, was to have that 125 be locked in, but also to have it grow by CPI over time so that it stays relatively, you know, at a standard level as inflation occurs. So what you have before you tonight is a draft, and we know there are a couple typos. We had some document control problems that we will clean up as this thing is finalized. But what you have before you is a draft extension agreement. The current agreement will expire at the end of the year. This proposal, instead of us going year by year and coming back to you each time, would have us go out for 10 years with the city contribution growing by CPI each year over that time. It would have the district agreeing to include $3 million for pool improvements in their 2016 capital levy. So we would have a planning horizon in terms of looking at a more permanent fix to some of the infrastructure problems with the pool. And then if either there is a catastrophic failure of the pool or its systems, or the levy fails, then we would, the agreement would provide that we all basically come back to the table and work together as we have in the past to figure out what is next. For purposes of our city council, this will be, you won't be voting on this tonight, it'll be coming to you on probably your next meeting calendar, not the 21st, but the first meeting in May. So that's where we are. Any, you want to add anything?
I'll say for the board, this will be on your May 1st consent agenda item. So if tonight you have questions, it would be a good time to raise those. So questions?
It states that the district will include up to $3 million for capital improvements. That's not very specific. That could be $10. And I was just wondering what you mean.
So we want to include $3 million, and if the systems that we can replace cost 2.87 million, then that's what we'll spend. It wasn't intended that we would spend 100,000, but we will spend up to 3 million so that we can replace the major systems that can be replaced, like the roof. And we would contemplate putting solar arrays on the roof to pay for the heat or to, another example would be the skin or the siding, the windows. There are some parts of the infrastructure that would exceed 3 million, and that would involve the pipes that are in the ground. And we thought that we could reline those pipes, but after consultants and we took some views of those pipes, we can't do that. And so that might be the catastrophic failure, that if there's breakage and it exceeds the 3 million, then that's where the other paragraph kicks in. We're leaving both the district and the city because we don't have the funds then to keep the pool afloat, if you will. But it wasn't intended, that's a good clarification, Dave, it was intended that we would spend 3 million, up to 3 million, in the event that those systems reached a maximum of 3 million.
It just might be made a little clearer in the document.
And I guess along those lines, it actually, and maybe others are going to ask this, so I'll preempt you or we'll come ask, allow you in just a second, but it says 300, or $3 million would go into the levy, which is different from what you actually have for repairs or spending needs. We might want to separate those two things. I mean, there's the levy and then there's the actual spending, right?
Let me ask you a question differently. It's, yeah, but it says we will include up to 3 million for capital improvements in the levy.
Capital levy.
In the capital levy.
That's where they do it.
Yes.
They have a little, that's for capital improvements, they do a capital levy.
Correct. Right. But what I'm saying is you might include up to $3 million in the capital levy, and then I'm not sure, do you, are you obliged to spend that 3 million on the pool after that? Yes.
After the 3 million that... Is procured through the levy.
We wouldn't be, I think, if I ask, if I understand your question, what we're committing to is a companion contribution. The city is going to contribute 126.5 plus CPI over 10 years, and the district is willing to contribute 3 million, up to 3 million, or 3 million, if we clarify that it's $3 million. Beyond that, if there are improvements that need to occur beyond that, this would come back to the board. If the improvements were of the $10,000 nature, I imagine the board would authorize that, pull it out of capital levy and keep the pool open. If it's of the larger magnitude that we didn't have the funds available, that's where the board could escape out of the agreement and say to the city, you are, also can escape out of your annual contribution because we don't have the funds to keep the pool open. Because, you know, pools, not being an expert, but having listened to experts, are expensive assets, facilities to run, very expensive. And spending 3 million on the infrastructure is a low number in comparison to the number that a new pool would cost, a new aquatic center would cost. Debbie and Mike, and then whoever else?
Thanks very much. What I'm understanding then is that there would be sort of an assessment in terms of what the capital infrastructure requirements are during the course of the next year before you went out...
Correct.
...to the voters. Okay. And is the assumption that 3 million, the estimated 3 million, is that based on just current work to date in terms of basic expectations you have?
It's based on what we present, the assessment that we've already conducted. So we've been actually adding money and improving the infrastructure for the last couple of years. And so it's based on our best assessment, that's the number that we need to keep all of the major systems, the siding, the windows, the heating, the roof, all of those major systems upgraded in order to get another 10 or more years' life out of the pool. This isn't, this isn't a 40-year. It's not likely that the 3 million is going to get us 40 more years because Mary Wait Pool this year is 42 years old. And so it will require other investment that potentially the board or the council at the time would decide it's time for us to think of a new site and building a new aquatic center.
Okay, because that was the second part of my question, is what is the anticipated extension of the life of the pool with this, so up to 10 years?
So when King County initially used the Forward Thrust money, they came out with a 40-year time period. And the pools have about 40 years of life if they're kept well. And even pools back from the Forward Thrust of the 60s, there are still some of those pools around, and some of those pools have been mothballed and have closed because the maintenance wasn't appropriate and kept up over the years. So we're hoping that we can get 10, potentially 15 more years, but we can't get another 40 years.[1796.47][1796.47]
Okay. So I just have to understand, and I'm sure when it comes to the council, our staff will talk more about this, just understanding the compound rate of CPI. It seems a little bit, I understand why we're doing it, but it seems a little bit unique in our obligations going forward, especially for a 10-year obligation. And then if you have $3 million identified for the Mary Wait going to HVAC, windows, et cetera, the need to increase that subsidy by CPI, I would think would be substantially minimized because your operating expenses are going to go down. So I would want staff to bring that to the council on the true need of increasing that obligation CPI for 10 years.
Sorry. I'll just take a quick second to respond. We can definitely talk with you more about that. The thing, the thing I would say is that CPI is a common inflator in contracts, in pricing in contracts, and in our local agreements as well. And that also, remember, our 125, or 126.5 now, and increasing by CPI, isn't just for capital, but also for operating the pool, paying an operator to staff it, run programs, schedule. So it's, and they're of course going to have, so it's not just a function of the capital needs, and certainly if the district makes some capital improvements to the pool, there may be some maintenance costs that maybe come down as a result of that, but there's still also that staffing and running the pool component that won't necessarily change after, if a levy were successful and some work were done. So that is a piece of it.
And to be very frank, the operator, Olympic Cascade Aquatics, has been operating the pool on our behalf. We contract for services, and the model that we've used is sort of the deficit model. You sort of have to prove that you're losing money in order to access the funds. That was the old model. That was the $100,000 plus to put the $25,000 in the bank. We expect that they could earn a profit, that if they run the pool well, that they don't deviate from the programs that they're offering our citizens and our students, that they ought to be able to turn a profit. So otherwise, what incentive would they have to be the operator of a pool if they, if it was sort of a break even? And, you know, the cost of salaries, insurance, fuel, just the cost of living. The CPI happened to be a 1.2, which happened to factor out at $1,500. But nonetheless, that's sort of what our thinking was, that we, and we have a four-year commitment to OCA, so we haven't given a 10-year commitment. We've said, look, we want to go out, we want to make sure that the 2016 levy passes, we want to continue to assess your effectiveness in running the pool, but I must say, they have done an outstanding job. They have truly done wonderful work with keeping the pool, keeping our citizens, our students happy with a great old pool that is very operational. Other questions? Would you?
I just have a comment. My pools are expensive, but they're essential, especially since we live surrounded by water, and all our young children should learn how to swim, and community members with health problems who really only have aquatic options for exercise should have that opportunity. So they're all expensive, but I think they're a very, they're all expensive, but they're an essential community resource, and I really want to thank the city for helping us to keep the pool operational, and I want to second Gary's thanks to OCA. I've been, I've given the city many times a thanks for the services offered at the pool for a wide range of ages, young kids and lessons, non-competitive swimming, exercise program for seniors, et cetera. Thank you.
I just want to add to that. I met somebody the other night who was in ninth grade, and for the first time was a member of the little polo team. I asked her where she swam, and it was Mary Wait Pool. I asked her what time, it was 5:00. I mean, this is ideal. You can't do this in most communities without a pool.
Anyone else? Okay. And from your perspective, okay on that? So we'll come back to both bodies at upcoming meetings.
Yes.
Okay, and then our...
The final item is a task force on youth concerns.
All right. So why don't we invite the staff who will be joining us in the conversation to the table? Cindy Goodwin, are you going to join us here?
Yeah.
Would you like to drive the computer over there?
Yeah.
All right. As soon as getting set up, what I'd like to share, just a few remarks to the both bodies, is that the district and city staff have been enjoying this cooperative relationship around youth concerns for many, many years. And I think in the briefing paper, if my assistant Jan could advance, I think it goes back to 1999. And the staff consists of Chief of Police Ed Holmes, we have YSF, the School Resource Officer is a member of the Youth Concerns Group, we have Cindy Goodwin and her YSF counselors, I have principals, assistant principals who attend, we have city partners who are responsible for youth programs that attend these other month meetings. And we talk about, how do we keep our youth safe? We talk about, what are the looming issues that we're going to be facing in the next one to two weeks or months? One of them has to be homecoming, or one might be the prom. And what messages do we want to get out where the city manager and I will sign, co-sign a letter signed by other, the mayor and the board president, by other influential people in the community, employing parents, to be mindful that this is a time when unhealthy and high-risk behaviors are exhibited by our youth. So the idea emerged was that some of the topics that we talked about, depression, anxiety, stress, are ones that as city officials or school officials, we are a lonely voice. We need, desperately need the voices of the parents and other professionals in the community to help us go down this road of exploring stress and depression and anxiety, which then manifest themselves into these very unhealthy behaviors. So with that context, we thought we would, we, that when the mayor and the board chair and I and Noel met, that the city manager and superintendent would appoint a task force, and it would be ad hoc in nature. So that's where the word ad hoc comes. It's going to sunset and end at some point. And that this task force would be a task force of parents and community professionals to dig deeply into these topics. And so with that, I would then turn it over to Cindy, who can talk about the medical issues and the health issues associated with these themes.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you, members of the council and school board members. It's great to address you all at once. I gave, I put at your place where you're sitting, a two-page document that I'd like to speak from. Prior to the meeting, you saw a white paper, and the white paper was a much higher view about kind of some of the national thinking on prevention, looking at not just the risk behaviors that we're seeing, but what are some of the underlying root causes of those behaviors. In a lot of the discussion that we've done, some of us have really come, we've seen certain drinking rates go down. So the overall drinking rate has gone down on the island, but those who are binge drinking, that's staying the same. And some binge drinking on the island and ecologies nationally, it's becoming extreme binge drinking. And so that's really one of the, one of the concerns that we have. We're also concerned that if you lower binge drinking, will you see depression or anxiety go up? Kind of like whack-a-mole. If you, if you stop something, will you see it manifest itself differently? So our concern was, how do we not play a game where we addressed these risk behaviors or risk attitudes individually, but what can we do that would really make a difference long-term? How do we come around that? So it's really, we came together as a group at youth concerns and approached city manager Tree and Dr. Plano to say, can we take a look at doing a very similar planning process like we did in 2005 and '06? Put together a very similar group, use the best practice that they've used throughout the United States and other places in the world too, to take a look at public health problems. And so that's how we'd like to address this. If you take a look at the first sheet, I really just want to take a couple minutes so you can see what we did. The, when you look at prevention today, it's not about doing one-on-one, it's not about doing, going in the classroom specifically. That, that really is in place well on your island. Your school system has great curriculums there, there are counselors that go in on a regular basis. All of your kids are really given this information. The environmental approach is really how do leaders come around it? How do you change the norms of your community, the access points where kids can get it? And how do you make that, ensure that your enforcement's there? Because then you're really giving the message that we're a society, we're a community that doesn't tolerate this. So we looked, we began that process in 2005, we applied to King County, we got a mobilization grant to bring people together. We had, we had the education sector there, the medical sector, faith, police, we really brought people together and asked them to take a look at the data relevant to our community. What did they see? What should we pay attention to? And our focus for those two years was to determine what risk factors we would address as a community. We moved in, two years later when that, that pilot project was running out, we applied for a five-year federal grant. We had one, we finished it, went the second year of a federal grant. And in all of the work that we've done, it's really dealing with the environment. It's dealing with the messages that we give, that the medical community gives, that anybody who touches youth, that we're all saying the same thing. So you'll see pamphlets, you'll see messages on boards, you'll see letters going out, you see forums from the mayors, different people have guested forums, but we're hoping that the message gets out there in many different ways. As we, if you move down, as you'll see, we'll give some examples, town halls, the prom letter, a lot of things that Dr. Plano already addressed. And as we move into 13, this is where we really came together as a group. We'd like to make sure that we pursue monitoring all of the risk protective factors, but we really want to go deeper. We want to take a look at how to address the root causes. And there's, there's a lot of prevention work out there nationally and internationally on how they're doing this and how they're looking at indicators on a community level. So if you go to the second page, the second page is really, this is where it outlines how we as a department would like to work again with the Youth Concerns Committee, the CTC. And just to know about CTC, Communities That Care, we call our coalition Communities That Care, but that's really the evidence-based practice developed under the Social Development Research Group. And that is a model of how you plan to address either, do people wear seatbelts? Do, let me see, some public health models, lowering your heart rate in community? So how do you bring everybody together to address this? Again, it's about public policy and it's about changing, it's about changing our behaviors. And we'd like to do something very similar, and both Dr. Plano and Neil Tree have agreed that they'd be willing to appoint a task force. So we gave the group characteristics that we'd like to see, six to eight people, skills in reading and synthesizing research, we'd like to have people in epidemiology, pediatrics, public health, but people who would be able to look at our data along their pants and say, this is what we know, this is what we know works, and let's take a look at what you're seeing in your community. Any public process like this really has to be done on a community basis. We look very different than my community on Beacon Hill or the Buon in the High Line area. When we did a public planning process over there, we came up with a really different set of things that we need to address and how we need to approach it, and how we need to reach out to people of 28 languages. So this group of people would take a look at our characteristics. We would hope that they'd spend from maybe June to September evaluating and assessing root causes and local behaviors. What do we need to pay attention to? Again, listed here for you, some of the, some of the research bodies, they're doing very good thinking in these processes. And then by October, be able to report back to both bodies here on root causes and as they pertain to Mersh Island youth. The specific and measurable recommendations to improve the health of our youth, what should we be paying attention to? And there are a lot of behavioral vaccines, that's a term, I think that might have been in the white paper, for things that you can do that really change how you live and how you think and the outcomes that you'll see, the indicators of depression and anxiety. So we'd like that to be brought here for all of us to have it, and I think the next step would be something similar that we did when we addressed our three primary risk factors. We would take a look at, how do we keep the infrastructure in the community? What should we do with those recommendations? How do we get the medical community on board? How does the school, who would they put forth to look at how they implement recommendations? What would we do as a city? What would we, what recommendations would we approve? So we're talking about a higher-level process, it's really not telling you what they are because for any process like this to work, we really need to have a good group of people looking at what's out there. So this is the next step in making sure that we approach our kids' well-being. If you can improve their well-being, you will see the other risk behaviors go down. And that's what, this is the next step in our Communities That Care planning model. So with that, I'd like to entertain any questions for you, and see if we can answer anything. I think that this is really exciting, not just for Mersh Island. I want to say that this, as you can see, there were, there's a lot of research going on here, there's some great research relevant to communities like ours. We know a lot of communities, very similar in demographics, so there's enough work out there. And we have some good partners, and some initiatives brought some of the speakers that we've had. I'm seeing for University has a great, great website on channel success. How do you raise kids that are high achievers but also do really well? Not just now, but later in life with health indicators. And it's very possible, but let's make sure that we can do for the kid here. And that's what our whole goal is. So it's really quite exciting. So if I can answer any questions or any comments, we would love any input that you have, any thoughts that you have as we embark on this? Anything that you think would help us? Questions, comments? Mike?
A question. Why is marijuana legalization in the 12 column when it was approved? It looks like from the mayor, it was legalized in 13?
It was legalized, I think, in November of 12, and it was effective January 1st, 13. Do I have that right? I'm pretty sure that's right, yeah. So I put it there. I also listed those, those are environmental conditions, those are something over which we don't have control really, but whenever you're going to develop a strategy, you're going to have to take into consideration what environment are your kids growing up in, so.
The question I have is, you referenced the next step, and this outside environmental factor of marijuana legalization, I wonder if we're taking advantage of this outside environmental factor that has now been thrust upon us? privatization of spirit cells, you know, the after action of that, it's my understanding that DWI's kind of went down, contrary to what everybody was expecting. With your shop, the funds that you have, the resources, et cetera, and being attuned to our community as well as you are in with cooperation with school district, I mean, literally the nation eyes are upon us on what is happening to our community, to the community where marijuana is legalized. And we have the potential to influence that with a baseline before and then documenting what happens after. Because it seems to me that this marijuana legalization has always been, it's always been caveated, if communities are able to implement this without adverse affecting our youth. And the deputy mayor and the mayor and I experienced an AWC with the counties bordering, the border counties, when they anecdotally talked about marijuana and the uptick in the equivalent of DWI, and the anecdotal information. And I think the country will be looking to communities like ours for that information. So my concern is that you're doing this next step, which is marbling, probably needs done, but is it going to prevent you from looking, keeping the eye off of this, maybe reemphasizing this new environmental situation with marijuana and documenting it on what's happening with marijuana and our youth, not only for our youth, but literally for the nation to refer. I mean, I can see lots of who's talking about, well, on Mersh Island, this is what happened.
Yeah. A couple of things come to mind. First of all, we won't stop any prevention work that we're currently doing in helping youth and adults know the implications of marijuana use, and that it's still legal for all youth. I'm not talking about medical marijuana, I'm talking about recreational. We'll still work on talking about access and talking about enforcement on that. So we won't, we won't take our eye off of that, and hopefully by dealing with root causes, we'll also see that go down. So we'll continue to monitor and document what we do and pay attention to what's best practice for addressing that. We're giving out a lot of information to parents and youth, and we won't stop doing that. So anything that you see us doing there, we won't discontinue or we won't stop working on that.
So in your work plan, are you studying this with a baseline and...
Yes. If I understand...
You're going to prepare a report that says this thing's been legalized for two years, three years, whatever, and this is what we saw on... three years, whatever, and this is what we saw on our staff?
So let me tell you what we're doing, let me see if I get it, what you're saying. So we are monitoring not just youth rates, but perception of risk rates, because those are always the precursors to use going up, whether parents and youth think that it is dangerous to use, experiment, or use regularly marijuana. So we're monitoring those, even monitoring youth use rates as our most community, so that's how we're doing that. And we continue the prevention that we do in that area. We'll do that as well.
So when do you plan that report?
We're not that far out, so the one data point we have does show some perception, lower perception of harm. But I think you'd need to wait at least a couple of years, and the data isn't taken, data is taken by two measures that we use, and they each alternate years, so they're two years, every two years. So probably when we feel like we've got a data set that we can say with some reliability, we're seeing a trend.
One final question, so do you think that study will be a level to where it can be scrutinized at a very high level in other, you know, at the equivalent in Washington DC? Do you think it will be of that quality?
I do. I think that the tools are very respected and they're used nationwide with most high school students. It's called the Healthy Youth Survey, it's a reliable test. It's been proven in tests in many communities, so I think that it will be respected data. Yeah.
I was just going to add one dimension to what Cindy was sharing about Councilmember Sierra's comment, that is, the work that we're interested in isn't necessarily focused on marijuana or drug use. It's really focused on wellness and healthy, healthy minds and healthy attitudes. Because when you think of the tragedies that have occurred in schools around the country, those tragedies were precipitated by youth who were very mentally unstable, in some cases, very depressed, very anxious. And so marijuana is often a manifestation of a deeper mental health issue. And so we're really getting at some of the mental health concerns, so I don't want you to think that we are doing a study necessarily around now that the law has changed and what new unhealthy or behaviors are, youth are exhibiting, or have those behaviors increased or decreased. It's really more around wellness and around healthy youth, well, not well-established, but youth who come from, who live in homes with lots of stability, lots of touchstones for good health, good mental health.
Some really quick questions about the task force itself. Do you anticipate that the members will be people from within our community or outside experts? And will they serve voluntarily? Or do you plan, will these be paid professionals that come in and serve on this task force?
I could say what I would recommend, if that would help. I think when I've seen this done before, you want to get as many professionals from the community as you can, even not people who can look at data and really, not have an agenda, and really look at data and be able to synthesize material. I think that we do have these professionals in our community, and I think that we could find them. And when I was taking a look at how other coalitions similar, other work has done, I could think of people who would fit the bill for a lot of these positions. Not positions, just people who would bring together. So I think it would be, I hope it would be in the island, because they all know how we live here, so.
And do you need any, well, and second is, how will they be selected? Is it something that the two of you will, you know, jointly appoint these members? Or is that planned?
The idea was that we would hope you would affirm the work and say, yes, go forth, we'd like the idea, kind of thumbs up, and that we would come back with a report in October. That was our initial thought. And we want the task force to be a group of professionals. We don't necessarily want people who are just interested or who care about, but really the kinds of people that Cindy noted, pediatricians, the therapists, psychiatrists, people who are. Yeah, and others, so that it's really a technical professional study on youth wellness.
Okay. And so that is, sort of my third question, is do you need any, do we need to take any formal action on this, or you just need a, you know, a pundance of nods that, you know, we like this and we'll go forth and?
I would like a vote, if you are comfortable as a body voting and you can, as your rules allow. It would be nice to have our elected officials, why we thought initially that this would be a good topic, is to show the wider community as their elected officials, whether it be the school board or city council, that you care deeply about this issue and you're interested in this issue and you want us to uncover what may be troubling. As we come back in six months, it may not be a happy story, and we want you to be with us with telling the story, because it's important that the story be told if we're going to become healthy. So some type of consensus, thumbs up, vote, that would be my thought.
I'm still on my microphone, Jane, Ben Benson, and then Dana. And then Debbie.
You can use mine.
I have a question for Cindy. You mentioned that this team of experts will evaluate and assess root causes and local conditions, and you said they're going to look at our data. What exactly? And is there something beyond the survey that's given every two years?
Yep. A couple of things. I would hope that they would look at the literature, the research literature on wellness and well points, and how can we as communities raise healthy kids so that you see our risk factors go down? So that's one body of research. And the data that I'd like them to look at is all of the surveys that we've done over the past 10 years. We've seen certain things go down, certain things not go down. So what is it that we need to pay attention to so they get to know our kids? And then I'd really like a review of just the literature that looks at youth growing up in affluent communities. Because I think that that's really telling, there's certain things there that need specific attention. So that's what I hope that they would get grounded in. Okay? Yeah?
Well, you certainly have my thumbs up. Even my kids have high school for several years, I just remember that they had a lot of stress and anxiety, and it wasn't from the parents. And so I really appreciate.
Might have been Benson.
No. But I really, I really think it's important for the community to take a holistic approach to, you know, basically making sure that our kids are well-taken, and I mean, it reflects well on our society and our community. So I think this is a task force that has a very important charge. And so I commend it and certainly look forward to getting information that you can gather.
I don't disagree at all with the purpose behind that. I'm a little bit concerned about the methodology. To be candid, this is the type of thing that PhDs spend years researching and then coming out with huge reports and, and I'm just concerned that we don't have the bandwidth and potentially the expertise to deal with this and come up with a report that would stand the, any kind of challenge. I would encourage you, if you want to go forward with this, to potentially engage with UW or one of the other schools which has a strong, a strong department that might specialize in this type of area and try to get their engagement in it and their supervision. I mean, I think what you do, Cindy, and obviously what the school staff does in their respective areas are great, but this is, this strikes me as a little bit outside your normal area of operation. And I just, I want to see this succeed, and I really believe that we need to bring some outside help in to make sure that it really does that.
Yeah. Can I address that? That's a really, really good point. I think that it didn't outline everything that would need to happen with this group, but you're absolutely right about that. We would need to have some professional facilitation, especially when you're bringing in research to orient people why you're looking at this research, what is this body telling us and why is it applicable here? But we would need to do that. I think it's, we wouldn't be doing research per se that you would expect with some kinds of reports, but we would need somebody who's very versed in this, and there are certain people that you've done that you can use for things like that. So we have thought that through, how would we do that? I think that we know the direction because we know our community, but I think there is professional help that's going to be needed with this group of people to really get them used to being able to look at the data and come to the right conclusions and interpret the right. But that's done, and we have very good resources for doing that. And that's actually why I pointed to Stanford's Challenge Success, they have great white papers and they have a lot of resources to help people.
I would encourage you also not just to have them at the beginning of the project, but also looking at the data themselves and coming, working with the group to come to conclusions on it. It is, I mean, this is a complicated area.
Yeah.
Debbie, Dave, Adair, Tana, and then Pat, no, and then Janet, I'm sorry.
I'm actually extremely pleased to learn more about this, because I think, you know, we often talk about some of the more obvious signs of distress, which is alcohol, perhaps drug, et cetera. But I also recognize and appreciate that within our youth community, there are other, perhaps less obvious or law-breaking forms of self-harm, shall we say. And the fact that we as a community are deciding to start looking at some of those root issues, those root causes that, you know, stem either from us as families in the family unit or the community, or just the expectations of being part of an affluent society, I think are tremendous. So first, I commend the basic principle of this. The second thing is, there's obviously a lot to be learned in terms of data, research, et cetera, but I think one of the core components that we need to make sure that we adopt is community education and awareness. And I think that there's probably certain findings there and components that are essential in moving forward. And I remember Cindy saying something that there were, you know, something like four fundamental things you could do, you know, for a successful teenage, and I remember two of them, unfortunately, I don't remember two of them specifically, but the kind of kids that I had when I was a teenager, it was better, you know, it was things like getting enough sleep and not having a computer in the bedroom.
That's right.
And to me, that was astounding, you know, what you could extrapolate from some of the core messages or the core best practices. So I would really look forward to having sort of a community awareness and education component that comes out of this, that may or may not delve into the specific details of your data, but, you know, are indicative or appropriate to the conditions that we Mercer Island face. So I thank you for bringing this forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Dave?
You mentioned, Cindy, that you were going to develop measurable pieces of data, and we've been doing this for nine years, and you have some measurable pieces of data already done. I just wonder what's happened over the last nine years in your analysis?
Okay. So we follow three indicators, primary indicators for alcohol use, so we've seen alcohol use go down, actually more than we anticipated, more than we wrote into the grant. We've seen past 30-day use, and I'm starting to forget the second indicator, because I don't have the data on the top of my head, but we've seen our indicators do well. We're actually lowering the alcohol rate here. I'm far more concerned, like I said, the binge drinkers, that has not budged that much, and that is a common, it's actually an issue for many affluent communities. So that's really what we're hoping that we can address more.
So are we looking to develop more types of data or what?
Okay, you know, that's a good question. I don't know what data we will follow, because I don't know, I think we're going to leave it to this group to see what we monitor and what points we choose to measure over time, so I'm not sure exactly yet. I know a process that we need to know if we want to increase our wellness and decrease the risk behaviors. I don't have the specifics of that, and I'm hoping that this group will point in that right direction, or that perhaps the facilitator or the expert that we use in that process will.
The assumption is presumably that if wellness increases, your risk behaviors will go down, but that's only an assumption. I wonder if you can measure wellness a little more directly, or, that's just a question, and I have no idea what the answer is.
Yeah. Well, the answer is that they have seen that in many communities, that they've implemented programs on wellbeing, that they do have direct correlation, or you want to stay away from cause, but there are many indicators that you can follow that result in better outcome. So they have done that on a community and individual level, you know?
Adair?
I actually didn't originally have anything to say, but I wanted to now piggyback on one of these comments, which was a lack of sleep, and that's one of the reasons why the squad is here for conversation on having leaders start at the high school. I guess that's been happening across the country, and they've seen decreased traffic accidents, increased graduation rates, FD squad, et cetera.
Tana?
Thank you. I'm also excited about this project, and I don't mean to pick your process, but I'm curious, in the proposed, some of the language, there's two different wording and focuses, one is strategies and one is root causes. And I think that what we're talking about with the professionals, we're analyzing data, it's great for finding the root causes. And then it seems that what the strategies and the, kind of from 2014 to 2015, what works and how we communicate and what strategies we use to get that out in the community or to address that, seem probably to be a different group of people, I would imagine. And I guess I would really know what your thoughts are on that, or if I'm reading or thinking of it incorrectly.
No, I, I've been thinking about that as well, and I don't, my gut reaction would be that this is not the right group, but because part of the story that we're going to learn may not be a very flattering one. And so who are those folks best poised to begin telling someone flattering stories about who we are? And it's the leaders in the community. I don't necessarily believe it's you 12 who need to be leading that charge, but we need to, but we need to unveil the picture, we need to tell the picture publicly. We need you to know what the picture looks like. And we then need to, together, be able to change some norms and values that we hold. And you as leaders, people will look to you and see where you stand on those issues. So that's a great question, who will this new group be that will lead the effort to begin to change some culture and some norms in a community? That's something that I think we'll want to uncover through the process.
Can I answer a little for you? So I have some, just some thoughts on that, looking at what other communities have done. You do want people in your community, because they're going to make recommendations that are going to either be in the family realm, the community realm, the school realm. So you want to bring together people who really want to take a look at what they can do for youth wellness. And I think that once we see the recommendations, we'll be able to figure that out at that point. And I think that we'll be pointing in the right direction, probably by the facilitator or people who've taken a look at how other communities have done it. So I think that will become apparent as we go down that road. But I agree, it's not the task force, it really, it really is us, it really is you. It's really everybody who lives here who can help us say, all right, but if you want to do that in our community, this is the way we'll need to do it.
Pat?
Well, thank you for this and all of your work that you, that we're all doing together through the schools and through the city. And I think we're a very lucky community to have that. I want to second the suggestion that there be that educational piece that goes out. And because I think that's really important, not only for people who are parents in the community, but also elders in the community and other young people in the community. And then I wanted to just suggest, and maybe you've already thought of this, that at least one of that task force members be someone who grew up here. Because I think that they bring a different perspective maybe than people who have moved here or live here now and so on, but someone who's actually experienced that. And certainly, a number of years will have passed and so on. But I think that our homegrown young people would have much to say in looking at us.
That's a good idea.
That's great.
It's you?
Me. Well, I applaud all three of you for bringing this opportunity to us. And while I haven't seen this at work in the community, I have recently seen it at Stanford, and I don't know if it came out of their Challenge Success program, but I think Stanford has a lot of high-achieving, high-performance, stressed-out students. And they realize that those students came along with a whole variety of issues, some of them mental health issues, some of them behavioral issues that weren't ideal. And I don't know what their process looked like, but I've seen the outcome, which is a whole program there called I Thrive at Stanford, that was really permeated both the educational offerings for students, but also what people are saying, how people are talking to kids who decide that they need to take 20 credits, and how to not kind of spur that along. So it's very infused now, and it's, it's very perceptible. And it seems to be quite popular among the students, so hopefully it's making a difference.
Good. That's what I read about, it's nice to hear your experience with it. That's great. That's really relevant to the work that we'll be doing, is how do you, how does it permeate? How do we say things to each other? Yeah, a lot, no? Good, that's great.
I want for me, I'll take my shot and then give it to you. How do you see this meshing or fitting with CTC?
Yeah. We were having a conversation about that. I think that we'll have a better idea of how that will mesh with CTC when we get to the recommendations, because I think that will give us some kind of instruction on what to do with that group and how they, how they will work together. They have to work together. They have to work together, but how that will happen, I don't know at this point. So I think we'll wait and see when the time comes what we think we should do. If you have any thoughts, let us know.
Okay. Yeah, well, just want to, you know, while we're on this topic, it's a good, good opportunity to just recognize the great work that has, you know, been going on all these years, the partnership, CTC, the work of the city staff, the counselors in the schools, the, you know, work, you know, cooperation with the police department, all the work that's gone on, on drug and alcohol intervention has just been so great, and it's, you know, it's such a luxury for us to have the city, city partnership on that and the city funding to provide those resources with our, within our schools. So, you know, thank you again for, for that. And, you know, just overall, I think this, you know, is a great project to, you know, go beyond just, you know, build on the great work that's been done on drug and alcohol prevention and substance abuse, but looking at it more holistically at the underlying causes. Because again, a lot of this, you know, comes from just the extreme demands and stress that a lot of our kids are under and the, you know, sleep deprivation and, and, you know, I think understanding, you know, not just attacking the symptoms, but really understanding the root causes and seeing if we can lay some of those things that cause, you know, that cause kids to, you know, branch out in these, you know, or make some poor choices.
Anyone else? So you're asking for a show of support for this. Sufficient, thumbs up, thumbs down? Do we have any strong objection? I think against, mother, go forth. I think the one piece of sort of redirecting input, you stand, and you'll need to sort of contemplate how to integrate or not integrate his suggestions. But, thank you. It's Dan. Any questions more from you as to, as to, through the tenor or response from the council and board, or you?
No, thank you, they're really thoughtful. It was great to hear impressions, it was good to hear what you think about it, and we just need more of that. So thank you, and thank you for lending your authority and leveraging your elected position. It's really important, so thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add that this is certainly, as you can tell, something you're going to be hearing more about as it moves ahead, so we will continue to keep you updated and seek your input along the way.
Sounds good. Okay. Cindy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that brings us to the end of our three-topic meeting. Is there anything else for the grid of the order at this point before we adjourn? Just the, I think, to make sure the school board's aware of this, and is that there have been discussions between the city and the school board and the school district about potential interim plans in the event, when the library is closed for the renovations? And I know that those discussions are continuing and with a particular focus on tutoring opportunities at the high school to replace the opportunities that are at the, at the, at the library now. So those are encouraging, and I know that our staff and this feels like those are heading in the right direction.
Do you have any idea what the current timeline is for the library?
Best guess is that they'll probably start construction sometime in the fall. But, I mean, they have not yet finalized the plans. I expect the rate they're going, it's going to be probably June or July before they're ready to even submit to the city for plan approval. So assuming the city can turn around in a couple of months, then probably sometime in the fall before they actually close the library down.
How long?
Yeah, that's, that's the big question, because the, the issue is how much work they're actually going to do in the library. And their original plans call for closing it for, I think, nine months. And there's a lot of people in the, who have spoken out from the community saying that they believe those plans are excessive in scope and would like to see a reduced scope project, which would hopefully mean less time down. But it's definitely going to be closed for some period of time. I would say a minimum of four or five months, and hopefully, hopefully not more than that, but it's possible.
Always.
Good job. Good job.
Yes, and we do need a motion to adjourn. We just can't, we just can't walk away.
I'll beat it up, I'll tell you a bunch of, move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those favor school board members say aye. Aye. Thank you.
The, 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 the.
Yeah, he was here to jump.
He was, he was contagious, he was ugly.